And you call the order.
Yeah, so I'm calling the water and sewer commission meeting to order. For October the twenty fifth. And I do not have my documents in front of me. I'm trying to, I was trying, I was trying to find some five G signal in order to be able to. To log in here, so, all right. Hey, can everybody still hear me?
Yes.
Good, so welcome, public comments, anybody?
Nobody here.
No comments, okay, additions, deletions, or modifications to the agenda? Okay, moving right along, so it's just us and the mice. Items for presentation and or discussion, consideration of approving purchase of replacement equipment for the watering facility. So I'd like either Steve or Josh, if you could. Lead into that before we make a motion.
Yeah. You had all the documents out, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, so it's, we had a meeting on two Monday?
Tuesday was Monday this week, yeah.
Yeah, with Fornier and Kristen from Holt Tanner. And. The decision was made that. The, the. Replacement of the two channels on our current press are not a waste, they can be transferred to a new press or an upgraded. System, and the recommendation was to stay with a Fornier style press or the Fornier press. For our current and future situation. The. We had another meeting and there was a more of a discussion on the. Electronic upgrade. Which is another seventy one thousand, because that is a. So far out, if we ordered it today, it's like a year now, almost. I, the decision was that we, and that is usable in the upgrade going forward, and. You know, Fornier's, they're confident that putting the two channels on our press and using our current one will work. But at what point does it fail? And that's why we asked to at least be able to order it now. It, you know, it might be even a year and a half before we get the electronics in, but we're gonna need them one way or another. It's not lost money. Jack, oh, I, I'm sorry.
So I just have a couple of quick questions. When we talked about the various presses, we talked about a centrifuge press or keeping the current press.
Yep.
And we were worried that it would be difficult to find spare parts for this press if we kept using it.
Um, Fornier says no.
They're gonna continue to support this model.
Yeah, actually, purchase of the two new channels. To go on to our base press. Um, is, is fine. And those can be transferred if we decide to upgrade it. You know, during our twenty year study, we, you know, the gearbox, it's basically a gearbox and a motor that has. A large diameter shaft that the two channels slide on to, and then it, it just, it very slowly rotates. Our. Base press is in really good shape, it's not leaking. Oil, the gearbox seems decent, there's no vibrations in it.
If it doesn't sound or sound.
It's just the channels are shot.
Okay.
Um, and once Fornier said that they would fit a new model press. If we decide to go that route, and. Either a two channel, which is what we have, or if. For some reason, we decide to go to a four channel, it will fit either press.
Okay.
Um.
Well, it's definitely a cost savings of getting a whole centrifugal one.
Uh, yeah, because I think. Kirsten can testify, those centrifugal style presses are out of our price range.
Okay, last question I've got, you were talking about the electronics just now, and I, I guess I, my attention wandered for a second. Can, will we be able to use this when we get the replacement channels? We'll, we'll be able to put that to work even without the new electronics, right?
Yeah, a, and, and Fornier, you know, they, they have said that they will work, the, the old system will work. The concern is, it is twenty year old electronics that's been in a. Very corrosive environment, at what point will it fail? And because it is so far, I mean, if we ordered a complete new one, we would still have a year's time waiting.
Sure.
So that's why I feel that. To be on the safe side, we should at least invest the other money at this point.
Now, that makes sense, and just for your, in the event that the electronics did for some reason fail before a year and a half or a year. Does Fornier have an option for us in case we need an emergency set of electronics?
No, I don't believe so.
Okay, well, cross your fingers and maintain what we got.
The, the big concern that I have with the electronics is. There is a, a section that controls the air, there's some air salinoids that are tied in. I know one of them is completely failed because it's completely disconnected and it was cobbled to run off one. And I have asked them if we could at least change out that section, and they seem to indicate that we could. My concern was that. Putting the press back into the complete operational phase and not upgrading the air part of it. Was gonna give us problems in running it correctly, and they thought that they could. Upgrade those parts not too far off.
And I just wanna, I think, Kirsten, correct me if I'm wrong, but I'm looking at the proposal, it looks like the actual delivery time of the control panel is twenty four to thirty weeks.
Oh, that's not bad.
So I think.
I thought he said it was thirty six.
You, Kirsten, you might be more familiar, but I, that's what it says in the, in the quote.
Yeah, that's what it says in the quote, twenty four to thirty weeks.
Still a long lead time, but you know, not quite a year and a half, yeah, which, which still, I think, ordering it now makes sense so that we have it on the way.
Um, not that I'm advocating, oh, sorry.
I don't know, sorry, Morgan. As chair maybe, I don't know, or if you want to let Aaron go.
We'll let everybody in that's there, go ahead, speak, and then I've got a few comments or questions.
Um, not that I'm advocating for copying something together, but. If there does need to be something done between now and when the new one comes. Is it something that like they can wire it to keep it going, like when Jay asked, piggybacking on Jay's question of like them?
I, I believe the, the air salinoid components, I, I have, I haven't. Taken photos of them and sent to see if they, they have some or can get some. I, I feel they need to be changed. Now, and also not included in any of these prices. We, the recommendation was that we upgrade the air compressor that is out there. And I got some information from Fornier today on what the demands requirement for the press are. And. Purchase, you know, figuring out what we need to purchase, because that's not included.
Morgan?
Okay, could you go back over the, we get the replacement pieces we're talking about, we need those urgently. And then we decide to move forward with ordering a whole new Fornier system. Are all the pieces that we are ordering going to be transferred over to the new unit? Okay, so. All right, so the, when we were talking about prices, we're talking about the urgent. Urgently need parts, including, I think, some time, electronic mechanical time to install or put together, we're talking around a hundred twenty thousand. A new unit is around three hundred thousand, is that correct?
Yeah, a little less than.
So we're actually would be talking about less money than the, than that two hundred eighty thousand if we order, okay, so. Okay, that's in our favor, and then I think the third question is, Josh, you touched on this the last meeting. If. We're ordering whatever it is, new equipment, replacement, and it's over a certain amount, we have to go out with an RFP. But I'm assuming there's only one Fornier is Fornier, right? That is, so. How does that work, or, I mean, I guess we write it up? And are, are there other manufacturers that? I mean, I just, I guess what I'm getting at is, it, we, we write the RFP, but we sort of know what the answer is.
Well, for the, the equipment that we're purchasing tonight, it's really a sole source provider, so we don't, we don't do an RFP on, on this, we just. Buy it because there's really only one place to buy it from. And then the advice is before we kind of do an RFP for a full upgrade. But there, maybe that's what we're getting to, at that point, it's probably gonna be a Fornier press again, so we're sort of locking ourselves into that in the future. Kirsten, you might have more to.
Yeah, I can, I can just add, add to this, so. With a full upgrade, you would be financing it most likely through the state of Vermont's Clean Water State Revolving Fund Loan Program, which is, has a, you know, a two percent. Loan, it's, it's basically a two percent loan. And they have pretty strict procurement requirements, they like to have or equals. But when it's, when you're into upgrading an existing piece of equipment. Where you need to expand it, that becomes, that becomes. I guess justifiable that that doesn't need to have an RFP. Because it's, it's already existing and you are just replacing certain parts and pieces to it to keep it functional or to expand it to increase its capacity. Does, does that make sense?
Yes, it's, in, in essence, we're asking for a loan to upgrade a system that we desperately need.
Right, and that's for, that's for the future, that's not right now, that's, that's for the future.
Right.
A comprehensive upgrade, and I just want to. The, the recommendation of our twenty year evaluation will be to have a full comprehensive upgrade to the full de-watering. And septic receiving facilities at the plant. That's a discussion for another time, I, I think, but.
But it's, it's, it's also your recommendation that we's. Our, that the Fornier press is our best alternative.
The Fornier press is an excellent technology and the best suited for what you're, for what Richmond. Does with the amount of septic that you receive, you know, it's a revenue, it's a revenue source for you. The Fornier press, when you're, when it's pressing straight septic, which there's plenty of facilities that are like that up in Canada. They're getting in a tremendous cake solid, so not to nerd all out, but the, the higher the cake solids, the, the drier it is. And the less you're paying for disposal because you're not paying for the weight of water in that's, in that de-watered cake sludge. So that's not, I mean, you have to, well, Richmond has to. Uh, you know, blend it with your waste activated sludge from the biological process, however. If it is the direction for the town to continue to accept the amount of septic that you do or increase that amount. This is the best de-watering technology on the market for that purpose.
And.
That's a great description, thank you.
And I spoke with Steve Palmer, who used to be with Green Mountain Engineering. And he is doing a kind of comprehensive study on his own right now of de-watering facilities in Chinon County. And he felt that our. That the Fornier press in Richmond was about the top of the line that, for solids, that, that was out there.
That kind of thing.
Which gave me a, I mean, kind, he didn't give me anything in writing, but he's like. You guys are right up there on her list of the amount of solids you're producing. And I can testify since Monday, we've taken in a hundred and twenty thousand gallons of septic. And run just septic through the press, one channel. And it is much, much drier than when we have to blend it with waste sludge. It just happened that we were doing some other things and we didn't have any waste sludge. So we've been able to run just straight septic, and yeah, we had two days of over forty thousand and another day of well, thirty six thousand. So I felt really, really confident going forward with two channels that we could keep up.
Good news. Any other questions from anybody, discussion?
Well, next question is having to do with paying for it and the fund balances and stuff, and I know that's something you wanted to talk about.
Yeah, let me.
As we go into that, Morgan, perhaps you clarify the gross total that we're looking at, just for the record.
Yeah, I can, so the, the de-watering equipment. For the two channels is one hundred twenty thousand nine hundred and thirty dollars. And the recommended control panel is fifty six thousand four hundred and eighty five. Which in Kirsten's memo, there is the total, just like, what is a hundred seventy seven thousand?
Hundred seventy seven four one five.
Okay, I'm looking at the.
So there was a revised memo this morning, because we. So just, just a little background, the, the original proposal did not include shipping to the site, so we had that included. We had them update their proposal so that it included the shipping to the facility.
I sent, so I sent like three updates today, I apologize.
And get some nine AM update.
Yeah. Then I sent two more fund balance updates this afternoon, so yeah, that one had the full one twenty. So I think essentially there was like a one oh eight, it went up to one eleven for the ship.
I'm just now wondering where my.
Yeah, I can.
The bottom line is one seven seven four one five.
That's the bottom line, yeah, if you want, I can. Share.
And that's with the controls.
So here, yeah, I can put it up on the screen if that's helpful. There we go, so.
Not that it matters, but where is it being shipped from?
From Canada.
Lines Quebec.
So this is the revised quote of one eleven oh sixty.
On drive up and get it.
Or you leave it.
You have a fire truck.
I do.
And the service is nine thousand eight seventy, that's the updated quote, and then the. Control panel, the recommended control panel is fifty six thousand four eighty five.
Oh, actually, I think I did finally find it, I would think of.
So if, Morgan, if we're looking for one seven seven four one five, then we're looking for, where do we take it from, right?
Right, right, and so I did send the commission a couple of updates today, as I got. An update from our auditors, and then I sent that, and this is where I sent it, they had another update, so I'm just gonna spare everybody the, the back and forth. This is the final spreadsheet from our auditors that show fund balances, so the ones we really want to look at here is the wastewater unrestricted funds. Well, sorry, wastewater capital reserve, so that currently has a balance at the end of FY twenty three of four hundred sixty two thousand dollars. We also have unrestricted funds at the end of FY twenty three of four hundred and six thousand dollars. So there's more than enough actually in either one, wastewater capital reserve is money that we've been putting aside specifically for. Things like this, so it might make sense to spend out of that first before we start giving it on assigned funds.
That makes sense.
Is there? Um, is there, I just, as a refresher, the capital reserve versus the unrestricted funds? Is there anything in either of those that would allow us to spend on this project, but not on other projects in the future, like are there any rules? About how we spend out of those two accounts that we might want to take into place?
So wastewater capital reserve would be specifically earmarked for wastewater, whereas unrestricted funds can be used for.
Anything.
Anything on the wastewater side, so it couldn't be used for water. But wastewater capital reserve would be like larger wastewater pieces, whereas like it couldn't be used for, they say, the collection system, right? We have a collection system reserve, so if there was a sewer issue, it could come out of collection reserve or unassigned funds, so the, the unassigned funds. Have a little more freedom, as long as they say wastewater.
And it's unrestricted, the unassigned ones?
Uh, yes, wastewater, I'm, I'm sorry, we did classify it unrestricted, I'm using unassigned, yes, that's, yeah.
Okay.
But from this, I mean. From my, where I sit, it doesn't make much sense to have a capital reserve if you just leave it alone and always use an assigned fund, I mean, that's what it's for.
Yeah, I think part of the buildup of this was because we knew we had the twenty years study coming, and this is essentially our first major purchase of the twenty year study.
And it will not be the last.
Little early, yeah.
I just knew there were some technicalities and I couldn't remember what they.
Great question, yeah.
Morgan, my, this barred my one comment is, even though the total there is a bit. It approaches eight hundred and seventy thousand dollars, which seems like a lot of money. But illustrative, if we're spending a hundred and seventy seven, and this is the first time. It seems pretty apparent to me that at the end of the day of the twenty year study, that money will not be adequate to make all the purchases we're gonna have to purchase. And I, I don't. I don't think so. So just eyes open, we spend money now, and it seems like a lot, why are we holding on to a lot of money? Because we expect to spend a lot. I.
A lot more.
Well, and this is kind of like a least hold improvement, that once we do it, in theory, we'll be able to take more septic, correct? Like, it's something that will make us money in the long run, so it's, I mean.
I mean.
It will eventually pay back.
This is the end of the. We're essentially starting at the end of the process in the plant, but this is the part of the process that. We can get some revenue back from, I mean, I'm not saying it's gonna pay it back in one year, but, I mean, we, we can. I mean, like I said, we, we've taken in the last, you know, since Monday, we've taken a hundred and. Twenty thousand gallons of septic, and I'm, would like to say that we could maintain that. Rate. With the press and two channels and not have to spend twenty four hours a day running it.
And the. Cake at the end.
It should be a lot better.
Will be drier.
Yeah, I would hope.
Morgan?
So I don't think we're. Really arguing whether to do this or not, it's where we pull the monies, and it does seem. That it should be pulled from wastewater fund, right, unrestricted?
Those are the two choices, so would it help, just to move it forward, Morgan, if I make a motion, the motion to pay the one seven seven four one five?
Okay, well, there's just a few things to do in one motion, so if you want to do it. I kind of broke them out so that we do the control panel. And, or sorry, this is the de-watering equipment, and we do that in one motion, and that includes what line you want to take it from. The total amount, the PO and the warrant for a twenty percent deposit, and actually, this is gonna be.
Brilliant.
Um, yeah, with my handwriting, PO number forty eight twenty four here, and then to approve. PO forty eight twenty two there, and if you want to do the capital reserve, it's that one. And that one, so hopefully, well, yeah, it would have been better if I didn't have to edit it in the middle of the meeting, but it's got it there.
So Morgan, if this makes sense, there's a couple of motions here, motion to use. The wastewater capital reserve funding to purchase de-watering equipment from Fornier as presented for one hundred twenty thousand nine hundred thirty dollars. And to approve warrant, purchase order number four eight two four. For the twenty percent deposit of twenty four thousand one hundred eighty six dollars, that's the first motion.
Second. I'll second.
The purchase orders for the full amount, and that's where it's not brilliant, because I didn't write it super clearly, the purchase orders for the full amount, the warrant is for the twenty percent.
Okay.
You might second it and beat Aaron by like a second and a half.
It's okay.
You can do the next one.
Okay.
All right, so we have a, a motion of floor to. Use a hundred and twenty thousand nine thirty of wastewater capital reserves to purchase de-watering equipment from Fornier. Purchase order number, what was it again, Josh?
Four eight two four.
Four eight two four, all in favor, say aye.
This is say aye.
Aaron, aye.
David, aye.
Farid, aye.
Oregon, aye, motion pass. Second motion.
Yeah, thank you, Maury, and the second motion, move to use the wastewater capital reserve to purchase an Allen Bradley control panel. And instrumentation from Fornier. As presented for fifty six thousand four hundred eighty five dollars. And to approve purchase order four eight two two. And the warrant for the twenty percent deposit of eleven thousand two hundred ninety seven dollars.
I second the motion.
Yay.
So we.
Um, I second the mo, right, do I say the whole thing? No, okay.
Yes, okay, so we have a motion on the floor to. Purchase Allen Bradley control panel, hundred and fifty six thousand four hundred and eighty five from Fornier. Using funds out of the wastewater capital reserve, purchase order number J, Josh, I mean.
Four eight two two?
Four eight, four eight twenty two.
And then a warrant number for eleven thousand and some?
Uh, yeah, the warrant for the twenty percent deposit of eleven thousand two ninety seven.
Do we, do we actually need a motion for that?
Uh, yeah, you need a motion for the warrant, you always, this is like approving a regular warrant. So we need to get that approved so we can cut a check to get that to Fornier tomorrow.
Okay, so that's. All right, so that's all in the same motion, okay, so motions on the floor, as, as stated, all in favor, say aye.
This is Jay, aye.
Aaron, aye.
David, aye.
Farid, aye.
Oregon, aye, motion passed, all right. So. If there's no other discussions or questions. So do I have a motion? Go ahead.
We anticipate that once this is purchased, installed, and up and running, are polymer costs going down?
Oh, no.
Okay.
Um. Yeah, our polymer costs. There's, there's, we've tried a couple, Alan had tried a couple of different polymers. And the one that we're using right now is really been the best. And we did a complete in August, we did a, we had. The company come in, they did a jar test, and, and we, they, they actually, we cut back on our use of polymer at that time. And. To. Further cut costs of polymer, we have gone from using fifty five gallon drums to two seventy five gallon totes. Because the cost savings is tremendous. Yeah.
I was just wondering if with the efficiency of the press, if, if we.
We'd plus. Um, I mean, we're already using a, a little amount.
Okay.
I mean, when, when Fornier was here, they thought that our, our polymer was right on track for what we needed and. Yeah, I can't say that it, it may be more efficient with the new press, I can't tell you. I just know when we're running it about as good as we can with what we've got right now.
Okay.
All right.
So just one, one comment real quick, and I think just, this is in touching what Kirsten said, that once we get. Our press upgraded with this quick.
You muted yourself.
We lost him, Maury.
Sounds like once we get the new, uh, uh, parts in on that press, that. We will be saving money, or we can take more septic in because we will have drier cakes, is that correct?
Yes and yes.
Well, yeah, and. We'll be able to. Press what we have more appropriately, my, my major concern with the press running the way we are is that. We had not been running very clean, running a mixture of wasted sludge and septic. We had not been running very clean, running a mixture of wasted sludge and septicage. Um, and the solids going back into the plant were dangerously low at overloading the plant. Uh, I mean, high at overloading the plant and um. That has been my concern with the way the press has been operating. And it only is at fifty percent.
That would depress operating more efficiently, we'll have less water, less waste to go.
I would hope so.
There's a lot of conversations to have in the future about what you want your future um, septicage and solid handling. Operation at the treatment plant to be. I, I just wanna, I, I wanna just. Mention that the existing facility has been operating and meeting permit because it's operating at such a low. Um, hydraulic capacity of its full uh, design flows at about like, I think it's, I think we said about thirty seven percent. Of capacity, so that frees up a lot of um. I guess it. The easiest way to say that is there's such high strength organic loading coming to the plant through the municipal. Uh, influence. And from the pressate coming off of the press, which is hot from septicage. Comes back into the plant and that is. You're able to treat it now bec- because your flows are so low at the plant. There will be a point in the future as you connect. More uh, development to your plant where that organic capacity will, will get, you know. You're, you're gonna use it up. So that's one thing we're looking at right now is how much can we get out of your existing tankage, your existing biological process? Which then begs the que- you know, do we start looking at a side stream treatment for your, your sludge handling and your, you know. Septic and sludge handling to knock that organic loading down before it hits the plant? Those are kind of the things we're, we're, we're. Investigating right now. And I don't mean to, I don't, I have a captive audience, so I don't mean to steal, steal your time, but it is something that. I think we would like some direction on as your engineer is what is the future of um. What is the future accepted acceptance for the town and what is the future? As a town, do you want to see for your industrial users? And I'm specifically talking about Stone Corral Brewery. And some of your other high strength uh, users that contribute to your municipal influence. Um, those are all things that I think as a board and as a town, you need to kind of define. So that you can be well suited to move your plant into the next twenty years.
Two quick thoughts on that. One is um. I think it's Montpelier that's taking a lot of. I don't know if we call it effluent or excavate or something from the landfill. And processing that just. Up the river from. Richmond. And then, so the question is, do we want to be processing leachate with PFAS known to be in it? That's a question for future, and I think generally the answer is no. Other thing I'll point out is that. The town of Jericho had a very much supposal conversation with us. About connecting a very long line from Jericho Center potentially to our plant. And that we didn't really respond to it, it didn't get very far. Um, the cost of that line is itself daunting, I think, but just that's on the radar for what it's worth.
So I would say you probably have hydraulic capacity to add. Some of those flows in addition to what your, your own town's growth is. I, I would say you. May not have the organic capacity, and I'll just preface that you have, you have limited, there is no ability to. Increase the footprint of that plant. You're in the middle of a floodplain and it'll, it'll never happen. State will never let you fill in that little. You know, hill and and increase the size of your tanks, so. There's a limit to what your plant can do, um. And that's, that's what we're trying to determine right now. That's where our analysis is going. What can we squeeze out of the existing tankage? What other newer technologies? And I'm not saying that this is what your next upgrade is gonna be, but it's something to think about. It could be something that's phased, um. As you move towards the future, but what influences all of that calculus is. How much septicage does the town want to receive? I understand it is a revenue source. Um, it has been working very well for your, for your facility. So that's a, that's a big question. How, what do you want to see for the next twenty years for septicage and? How do you want to um, treat your industrial users? Do you want to make them pre-treat? There are opportunities out there for the town to pass. A clean water S R F loan through you to say Stone Corral for them to put in their own pre-treatment pack, um, little package plant. So that it knocks down the effluent before it hits your sewer.
So, uh, we've talked briefly about this in the past, that um. Septicage, we have not talked about that as a desired feature. We've talked about that. Uh, if you go back in time. The cheese plant in town. We were limited in our ability to take septicage. So. I think it actually is kind of reverse. It's not how much septicage do we want to take, and then how do we restrict that all the other customers? It's what do all the other customers need and then what's left. For managing septicage. That makes sense.
Yep.
Hey, I have a comment. Is it, is there any way to pre-treat to get the PFAS out and let us take care of the rest?
Um. There, you know, there's research right now on PFAS uh, treatment, pre-treatment. It is extremely expensive and it's um. It's. No one's really doing it right now. I think the way things are gonna go, this is just me looking into a crystal ball, is that. I could see, and it also depends on what the state makes you do, and the EPA comes down and makes everyone do, but I could see a regional. Like maybe it's the Chittenden County solids, what is it? It's the. Chittenden Solid Waste District, right? They manage bio solids at a, at a, at a regional level. I could see them maybe implementing some kind of. Um. Facility like gasification facility that is super high temperature, you can burn uh, PFAS out of sludge. I could see that. It doesn't, it does not make sense for individual communities to do this at all.
So we would ship solids to them and let them burn it then.
Uh, this is crystal ball. This is where it should go, you know, some kind of regional solution.
The blue sky weird stuff.
Yeah, so uh, to Bart's comment about taking leachate. We have been really on the ball at the plant lately um, on Monday. Casella normally brings us a tractor trailer load of what they call washwater. From um, Avenue B. They brought us, they called and asked, and I'm like, yeah, bring it. It's wash, he's like, it's washwater. Immediately. When he pulled up and started to dump it. It was not washwater. It was a P eight, normally septicage and everything that comes to us has a P H of around seven. We happened to be testing, I grabbed a sample, took it in. Immediately called him, what are you bringing me? What is it? Cause it's a P H of four point five. I said, you're getting charged double for the load. Double what you brought. And I said, don't bring us another one. But it's just rainwater out of uh, Avenue B's catch basin. I'm like, no, it is not. Cause that would be peeling paint off of cars if it was. Um, and then we had one other customer bring us a load. And immediately the smell and the whole plant changed. We immediately, that was yesterday, we went out, we took a sample of it. Called them up, hey, your driver tells me he just picked up three. Residential um, septic tanks in Highgate and Milton. And he bringing it here. I said, this is not septic waste. It was a P H of five point two. And it stunk terrible. He immediately tells me. He just came from Plattsburgh, it's um, grease out of. Restaurants. I'm like, you're getting charged double for the load. And. Don't let it happen again. I said, we cannot take that stuff and put it through the process the way we are. So. Brad and I have been really on the ball about getting after people that have been trying to. Slide in loads of leachate, cause that's what that load from Casella was. I know it was. It, it, there was no way it could be just rainwater with a P H of.
Of lemon juice.
Yeah, basically. So, so yeah, we don't want to take it. Um, and it, it does affect the process.
What is the difference, just out of curiosity, like of revenue from taking like Stone Corral's? Waste, I assume from the brewing process versus taking septicage like. Is one of them a drastically more or less moneymaker or are they similar?
Stone Corral sends their high strength waste off. They don't put that into the system.
Right.
And then everything else that Stone Corral does. Is blended in a twenty five hundred gallon tank. And they release that once a week or twice a week, depending how much beer they brewed.
Um. Well, in some weeks, they probably don't release anything because they don't brew every week.
Yeah, I mean, it, it really depends when they, and. We do notice it when it comes in in our influence. Um, it makes the plant smell like beer. And we are like, oh, Stone Corral's dumping today. Um, yeah. Um, and it does lower um, the P H a little bit, but the plant reacts really solution by dilution. Um, we, we have, can handle that. Um, going forward. And I talked about, maybe we need to start to sample some of the waste that's coming out of Harringtons. Because it is a meat processing plant. Um, there are some grease, there's some chemicals that they use to clean, um, that we might, that is another. Industry that we might in the future need to think about a pre-treatment system or something.
I'm glad you were testing, but they brought those loads.
Uh, yeah, it, it just happened and, and Brad and I are both. Really aware of the way the plant smells and we're, we're, I mean, and immediately I call them up and, and I call them out on it because. If you, we can't let them. Do that to us.
Is there any way we can automate that testing so it's being fed in and unlocked?
Well, and there are those septic units that. Do ta- in the future when we upgrade. I mean, I think it's out of our price range, but there are septic units that. Um. Test the P H when they start. And if it is not in the parameters that you set, it locks them out and won't let them dump.
Okay, well, while we're making out our Christmas wish list.
Yeah, same.
It seems like that's something to. In the twenty year.
Yes, right.
Yes, exactly. I'm already looking into it.
But what, but I'm just saying that, you know, right now. The way we're operating, you know, Brad and I are pretty on the ball about when somebody's dumping, is it the right stuff? Um. We check this, the set, we have to be because. The, the way the plant's operating, we, you know, and the press is operating. That could, that could sink us.
So I just want to mention a couple other things, and I've mentioned this to Josh and, and Steve. So the state recognizes that Richmond performs uh, a valuable service as. By accepting septicage at the facility and um, they are motivated to see that you continue. To do that and um, to that end, there is quite a bit of subsidy available for. Final design, in fact, a hundred percent uh, reimbursement for any engineering services. For septic receiving facility for, for final design and we can lump in. Uh, anything that has to do with the septic acceptance plant. The holding tanks, the de-watering, and any kind of treatment on the pressate that comes back into the wastewater treatment facility. So there's. An ability to have any engineering fees that are associated with that completely covered by the state of Vermont. There also might be, and we're looking into different funding mechanisms and opportunities, there might be. And, and I don't want to promise anything, but there could be some pollution control grants. That are associated with anything to do with septic acceptance or like side stream treatment for that purpose. Um, we're working with the state of Vermont to explore those kind of opportunities for your town. So I just want to put that out there. Thank you.
Would that translate into actual uh, positive revenue or, or cash flow for us, Kristen or?
If you can increase the amount of septic, yes.
Okay, cause we, it sounds like we'd have some of those uh, capital costs paid. From those subsidies. I wanted to get back to uh, Stone Corral. Um. Their B O D loading, uh, correct me, is, is sort of, is somewhat different from B O D loading from. Home waste, is it not?
That's correct.
Yeah, so I mean, that doesn't have anything to do with septic. So if, if they increased or any brewery came into um. That, we would have, I, I mean. That would really consume a lot of whatever uh, reserve we would have, wouldn't it? Um, and, and pre, and pre-treatment for breweries is, is, is somewhat limited, isn't it? As to what it can do or help out.
No, no, there's, there's a lot of technologies out there. They tend to be modular, so. Um, and they tend to be, I'm gonna just throw out some jargon here, they tend to be like, um. Like an M B R, like a, like a membrane type uh, filtration. Um, process that comes in a, you know, a container and it's, it's very modular, so. If the brewery expands, they can expand this system with it. And there's a lot of different uh, technologies out there, different manufacturers. There was a good Vermont Digger article about um. Uh, one that I believe it's Burlington Beer Company, they're putting in a pre-treatment uh, this. Pre-treatment equipment at the, their facility in Williston. Um, because the Essex Junction plant cannot handle that kind of organic loading, and they wanted to increase their production. So. A lot of the big breweries around here have um, some kind of treatment like um, zero gravity. Has a DAP unit, which is a dissolved um, air flotation process. A, a lot of the bigger ones have something. It's the smaller ones that don't necessarily, I think, um, and I don't exactly know what um. Stone Corral is doing, but what Steve was saying, that, that their high strength goes, goes somewhere else for treatment.
They keep the solid.
Huh?
They keep the solid now.
Oh, yeah, yep. Yep.
It's still high strength, it's still extremely high, it's a lot higher than domestic wastewater in terms of. B O D, which is biological oxygen man, T S S, which is total suspended solids and total phosphorus, so. It, it's pretty high, high strength stuff.
If I recall correctly, at one point, we were looking at their testing and adjusting their charges based on the strength of what they were sending our way, yes. That's a, maybe that's a future agenda.
I'm still trying to wrap my head around all of.
Yeah.
I mean, I understand Stone Corral's testing. I don't understand the whole, what you guys charge them. And that whole process. I mean, I, I'm still working on that and for. Whatever reason. I don't understand, and I brought this to Connie, I don't understand why we're three months behind in charging them.
Right, I know there's a calculation that we use for how much they send. I don't know if it's tied back to testing. But we, we do charge a premium for how much. I don't know about the delay, maybe it's reports from the state that we waited on.
I don't know.
So maybe that's a future agenda item. I don't want to bog us down tonight.
No.
Morgan, but uh, maybe review how we deal with industry, um. Including, but perhaps not limited to Stone Corral.
Right, well, I think, I would think Stone Corral should be. Uh, I mean, they're under the auspices of the state as well, right? Aren't they supposed to send samples into the state?
They don't. And they just this month switched to having to fill out the same W R that we have to fill out. To send the state. Um. They, the state of Vermont just changed that for them. Um. But there. There are other sources of high strength in the town. Um, and I, I think we need to look at some of those, investigate. What? What they're doing to our plant also. I mean, it's not limited just to Stone Corral.
Sometime when we're bored, it'd be a great thing to talk about because it's not stuff that like. We all maybe know about.
I think it is a future agenda item.
Yeah.
Brewery was obvious, but if there are others, we should contemplate.
I mean, there are restaurants, there are, uh, you know, Harringtons. Um. You know, it's.
The bakery.
Yep, the bakery.
These are the obvious ones to me, but.
Well, we probably have to wrap up soon for tonight, but this all sounds. I mean, like I am interested in learning more about it. That's why we're here, right?
Yeah, I mean, anything, if the state has money to keep us in the septicage business, I'm like.
Yeah.
Okay.
Sign us up.
I, I don't have a magic pot of money, but I'll, I'll, I'll look for some for you.
The, okay, would somebody like to make a motion to adjourn?
This is David, so moved.
Aaron, so second.
Right, all in favor, say aye.
This is Jay, aye.
Aaron, aye.
David, aye.
Bart, aye.
Oregon, aye. Motion adjourned. Thank you, Kristen.
You're welcome.